I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Here.
Councilor Angeloni?
Councilor Caprio?
Here.
Councilor Diamond?
Here.
Councilor Esposito?
Here.
Councilor Fawnin?
Here.
Councilor Fucy?
Here.
Councilor Rose?
Here.
Have a motion to approve the March 4, 2014 WPCA Town Council agenda. Minutes.
Second.
Moved by Councilor Fawnin, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Okay, regular town council meeting. Welcome, everyone. Board of Ed, Superintendent, Board Chair, I think is here somewhere now. Okay. We're going to begin with the presentation of the fiscal year 2014-2015 school budget first. If you'd like to come up.
They're going to do a PowerPoint, so we're going to drop the screen.
Okay.
So if the council wants to move back so you can see that, that would be the time, I guess.
Yeah.
So this is the 2014-2015 Board of Ed level budget request. It's really not much different than what was originally presented to the board. The request is 4.91 percent. That includes full funding. If the special ed excess cost grants were available, that number would drop by .91. And then there's also an additional .48 percent available due to mid-year resignation and a recent decrease in annuals renewal rates. The request includes a decrease of 1.42 certified staff, but that's offset by a five increase in non-certified headcount, although one is a transfer from certified to non-certified. And this budget assumes that there's no impact of the pending teacher arbitration on the 14-15 year. So this is this year. This is the request that was approved by the board, $30,932, and that's 4.97 percent. These are the reductions, special ed cost grant, savings from the guidance resignation until September, October. And if we get it, in the last 10 years, it's been anywhere between $0 and $150,000. Unfortunately, also, you can only carry 15 percent over. So what I'd like to do would be to say, okay, we got money this year. We're going to keep the money this year, roll it into next year, and then account for it in the budget. But the system doesn't allow us to do that. And new positions and a couple of program changes account for an additional $167,000. This is the health insurance piece. We were originally at $470,000, but with the changes, we would be down to $355,000. And it's noteworthy that out of that $355,000, about $155,000 is a result of taxes for the Affordable Care Act. Outside tuition would increase by $307,000, excuse me, but the offset from the excess cost grants would be $268,000. It's assumed that outside tuition costs will increase by 3 percent, and there'll be no change in GoIg enrollment. We have an increase of $120,000 combined between bus contract and increases in diesel and heating oil and some small change in natural gas. Enrollment will decrease by 34, as shown on the following slide. This is the same as what you've seen earlier. It was the same slide that was presented to the board. So the staffing request eliminated a classroom teacher in Totucket Valley, increased instrumental music by .4 and guidance at the high school by .6. So that's an offset in the certified staffing request. Adding a total of three paraprofessionals, two at NBIS and one at Jerome Harrison, and adding a dorm monitor at the high school. This is the headcount slide that had been requested last year by the town council, so we included this in the budget book this year. This, again, has not changed from what you've seen earlier. These are the changes that we made in the current year. We added a kindergarten teacher due enrollment. We eliminated a language arts consultant and transferred a teacher into that position or a similar position. We eliminated a grade-one teacher. We eliminated four teachers at NBIS. We eliminated two teachers at the high school. We eliminated a contracted speech consultant. We eliminated an RTI paraprofessional, TVES, but we did use that money to restore a library paraprofessional at Jerome Harrison. The impact of a 1 percent change in the budget is about $295,000. And that's based on teacher salary less the unemployment compensation. That comes out to about a $48,000 savings. So approximately six teachers have to be eliminated to gain a 1 percent decrease in the budget. There were a couple of programs that the administrators were pretty passionate about, the school librarian and some additional school psychologists or social work services at Jerome. But because of the number being what it was, these were not included in the request. These are just some state and federal mandates. Again, these are things that we are obligated to comply with. And these, again, are the same as what you've seen before. But the list is pretty long. This is the per pupil expenditure comparison. You can see North Branford is 131 out of 169 towns. This is what we spend. And this compares us to the two-tier, which are the surrounding towns and the towns that touch those. And then also comparison to the state average. And this is an updated capital project request. And this was also requested on Saturday, so it's in the last page of your handout. And that's it. Does the council have any questions?
Hi. I just, could you just, Don, when you said for the budget to decrease by 1 percent, did you mean the increase by 1 percent or the total budget?
Well, the impact of a 1 percent change in the budget in either direction is about six entry-level teachers. So were we to take that 3.58 and decrease all by whatever, if we went to 2.58, we would have to eliminate about $300,000 and we would eliminate probably around six teachers.
Does this, my question?
Thank you, Don.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Scott. Does anyone on the council have any further questions? All right. Time is a quarter after. All right. Mike, you're up. This is the town 2014-15 annual budget.
Right. Good evening. I'm Mike Paulus. I'm the town manager, and I'm here to run you through the town side of the budget. Just want to hold that right there, Anthony. First of all, our increase, which I'll get, it's not actually on a slide, but I'll tell you, it was in the budget book, first page, and this is obviously a work in progress. So the numbers we have are changing as we get solid numbers or confirmed numbers. So presently, we're working off of a $910,000 increase, which represents a 6.85 percent increase for us on the town side. What we also haven't adjusted for, we were carrying a $1,464,263 placeholder for the Board of Education, and that number is lower, or is, that number, I just stated, is higher than the number they presented. So these numbers will change as we go through the process. So I'm just trying to give you an outline of where we were in the process and what I was faced with going in. And what you see and what you will see on our side are basically, you know, obligations, very, very high obligations that we have to meet. So what you won't see, you won't see a lot of things in here in this budget. You won't see the fact that the Board of Ed's capital projects are not calculated in this budget at this point in time. So right now, we are already, or previous to tonight's meeting and having the new Board of Ed budget number, we were at 1.61 mil increase, just as a start with no cap. So that number will come lower when we adjust in their final number. So roughly, I think that equates to roughly a third of a mil, yeah, a third of a mil. So that was which I started the numbers in terms of putting together this presentation, in terms of looking at where we're at. So why are we so high? This is just a small piece in terms of revenue, in terms of state aid to the town, a decrease. Increase on the Board of Ed side. We anticipate we may have some increased fees for subdivisions that are coming up, but that's no guarantee. Grand list growth, as you know, we had a presentation, is negative, .25. So nothing there, and again, we're using, as we've had in the past, fund balance to offset the taxes. So really, this is obligations, what you're going to see is obligations only, basically, with meeting those obligations without any, without a whole lot of anything else in this budget. So when we get to capital, not a lot. This is a very, very lean budget with no positions and hardly any capital put into this. So you ask yourself, where's that 910? 910 is, really, there are nine areas in which driving this increase, and this totals $825,000 of that $910,000. So that's, you know, the ambulance fund, that's a reflection of payer mix. Also, you know, the reimbursement rates, a number of things going on there. Police department, you know, million-dollar budget with a 1 percent increase in terms of contracts and obligations there. Health insurance, we've been through that, and we've talked, I have a separate memo on the question of health insurance and how we bid that. I'll have that for you. Wages and contractual, we've going into new contract year. We've got to account for that. Property and casualty insurance increase. Public works, I think, I believe, Fran can correct me if I'm wrong, but even in public works, I believe half of that is a salt increase. And we know where we went through this season. Animal control, fire department increase, and fire hydrants. The rest of the $85,000 is spread out across all departments. But this is what's driving this budget this year. And so that's where, you know, starting out at 1.61 before I even looked at cap is a pretty big number, in my opinion. And so that's where we're at, and one sheet tells the story right there. But expenditures, so you're not going to see the Board of Ed items, they're not in there. They're not accounted for. They're requested, but they're not calculated. No apparatus, there's some turnout gear, but unfortunately, you know, nothing for public works vehicles either. So, and when I say lean, I mean lean, really lean. There's nothing in terms of fat in this budget. We're going on, you know, replacement vehicles based on leases. We're just trying to avoid those capital purchases. Our defined benefit pension is up 2.8 for the town employees and 18.9 for police. Liability insurance is up 7.5 percent, and workers' comp is up 10 percent. So, you know, budget priorities, you know, that really falls, you know, for us to go through as a body, for the council to, as a body, to go through and prioritize. But my understanding and my takeaway is this group is concerned about fiscal stability and looks at consistent funding of the annual required contribution to the pension, the funding of the ARC for the OPEB, which is, you know, contribution, and prudent use of the fund balance. You know, so there's not much, you know, that you can do if you, so you don't erode that fiscal stability, really. So priorities are going to be tough in terms of what you do with capital. I don't think it's my position to say the request from the fire department, and they need apparatus, they need multiple apparatus, for me to pick a fire pumper truck over a rescue truck. I think I present you with all of the information to make the best decision and prioritize. So considerations, as I call them. Public works has asked for a full-time superintendent. You do not have, just to give you an idea, I guess I have to state this, that you have a large department without any second-in-command outside of the union structure. Okay? I don't think we can afford that at this time. You may decide otherwise. Part-time in the assessor's office as we go through rebau. Now, that could be a revenue offset that you may decide you want to do in terms of the property audits, personal property audits. And that's, you know, that's something for consideration. Restoration of the counseling services, we talked about this last budget go-around. That is a possibility to bring it back. I've made studies and talked about a plan. For a frac, I mean, it was $60,000, the budget was cut out last year. There's a possibility, if you wanted to, you could bring it back for, I think we put a notation in the budget for $20,000. But of these considerations, much of that, when you go through the budget book, if you haven't seen it already, you'll see it little flagged on the right-hand side in a box that says the detail of what it would cost if you decide that's important for this community and you want to add it back in. You heard this on Saturday, the Sunday hours. Bob did a great job in terms of, you know, detailing it at his request. I didn't put it in there again, because I'm already this, as I feel, way up high. So he presented all the detail. That's, again, another consideration for you to decide that you want to do that. Computer replacements, it's in the budget as a capital. Again, I think it's necessary. How far we go beyond what we've planned, I think we stick to what we planned. I don't think we can go beyond that. But again, one of Saturday's points that came up, could we and should we be looking at sharing technology services with the Board of Education? We do not have a technology department. Okay? And a lot of these departments run bare minimum. So police, as you know, no second-in-command. Nothing between the chief and the union. No position. So you've got to bring up a, at this point, we've lost, the lieutenant has moved on as well. So you've got, as you know, a sergeant serving in the lieutenant position. So is there a lot of need? Without a doubt, there are needs everywhere. This is not about meeting needs. This is just about meeting obligations at this point. And our obligations have pushed us to a point where we're $910,000 over last year. And I spelled out those in. So the bottom line, yeah, you know, fixed costs that we can't escape. You know, we're meeting our obligations, but it's really lean and there's no discretionary. That's all gone. It's been gone for quite some time, in my opinion. Looking at a mil, that is now going to drop because of the Board of Ed. But I was looking at 1.61 without even taking into consideration the capital. So those are the numbers in terms of what the mil would be worth at this point in time, subject to the changes in the actual numbers. So, you know, moving forward, to me, it's, you know, how do we move the community forward? It's about trying to improve the quality of life. You know, how do we maintain, you know, we've got to grow that grand list. There's some way we've got to do to improve and try to improve our level of service to the taxpayers for what they're paying. And we've got to create an environment of investment, you know, things like the business retention and expansion. But again, that's something that has to be done in-house without saying that we have an economic development coordinator. We don't. It's just a simple reality, simple fact. So it's a daunting proposition this go-around, and there's going to be some heavy lifting with respect to what you do with, you know, the departments, fire, police, public works, three biggest. They need capital reserve. They have capital reserve requirements. Fran will go, I'm sure, into detail about what his needs are. I'm just presenting you the obligations at this time. And that already is somewhere between, or close to 1.3 or 1.4 mils at this point. So that's what I've got, and happy to take any questions. You do have, I just will point to your, two things that you were looking for. A memo on the agent of record in the health insurance that was bid out in 2011, and it goes into detail in terms of what we saved there. And I think someone, it might have been Rose that asked for, the, Councilor Angeloni had might have asked for the department revenue analysis, so I have that as well, so we can pass that out. I think that came up at Saturday's meeting.
Mike, or Anthony, what's the impact of $350,000 you're recommending be diverted through fund-balanced operations? And secondly, how did you arrive at that number? Why is it $350,000 as opposed to any other number?
Well, is the first part, the impact of that use to the fund balance itself? Yeah, was it?
The 350 is the number we've historically used to offset taxation piece. We've added to that throughout the year, some piece for capital, something for OPEB. The 350 is our base that we use every year, that we put towards the budget. If you put a bigger piece this year, next year you'll have a hole to fill. Try to keep consistent with that number to eliminate any ups and downs in our fund balance. At 350, it brings it down to about 10.8. If all goes well, as this year is planned, if we can wrestle this year in with a reasonable, our estimate where we're going to end up this year, depends on how the rest of the year goes with the budget freeze that Mike's put on. Hopefully, we can salvage it and not go too far over expended. Be about 10.8 fund balance percentage. For about, we were 11 at the end of last fiscal year, so it's a little bit of a hit.
And the ideal, the minimum target is 10 percent, if I'm correct?
Well, our fund balance policy that we set calls for an unassigned balance of about 10. Moody's, the bond agencies, they go between 5, 10, they're all over the board. We set an internal policy of 10 for the unassigned piece and 15 percent for the overall piece. We're about 14.7 on the overall piece at the end of last year. So we're a little bit over on one piece, a little bit under on the other piece, but we're reasonably good.
Just for purposes of our planning, if you're projecting a 10.8, what does that .8 equate to in dollars and cents?
I have to go back and check, calculate the history. I don't have it off the top of my head. I want to give you a number without thinking about it. It's about a $5.5 million fund balance where we are right now. So if you want to work the math, I mean, I don't.
So 1 percent is about $550,000?
Yeah, yeah. Without my ex-dolum lost.
Okay. So we're talking about $300,000 to $400,000?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. Thanks.
Any other questions?
You don't have any vehicles anywhere, any department? Or did I miss that in your slide presentation?
No, in the capital, there is a police cruiser that's in, but it's going to be funded out of the money from the state in terms of the grant funding, so it's not, it's not a taxable side or a town.
And all the damage sustained by Fran's vehicles this year is repairable, not something that has to be replaced?
I'll defer to him on that, but there's need, there's great need there, and he's whatever, working his magic to make these things limp along. You know, yeah, there was, I mean, I think what you'll hear from Fran, and I've heard, is that you took a beating for a couple of storms, and the stress starts to show two to three years later. And then, you know, instead of having one big storm, we had a long season of events that translates into all of our supply and salt and sand and all that. But yeah, they're taking a beat. I'm not sure what's keeping them on the road. The need is great, unfortunately.
And we're still addressing the $231,000 shortfall, right, in this year's budget?
Right. Right. We'll have that later on in the agenda to speak to that, yeah. And again, much of that, you know, storm-related and other issues there. It was a long season, and it takes its toll on public works, and, you know, those are things you got to do. Those are obligations. It's like, you know, the garbage contract goes up, you know, it's not like we're not going to pick up garbage, you know, or plow the roads, or do what we need to do to keep the doors open and provide the service we provide. So, capital is the, there's a lot of requests. You'll hear from, you'll hear from the departments, they're, they put in, it didn't make the cut. So they're, I'm sure they're not happy about that, but they're big, big numbers. You know, I mean, you know, it's nothing new to this council. You've seen the numbers, you know what capital costs are. So I'm just going through the operations and the obligations.
Thank you. All right. Got to jump into the public hearing quick, so. All right, we're going to go down to the public hearing. Notice of the public hearing, the North Branford Town Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday evening, March 18, 2014, at 7:30 PM in the North Branford Town Hall Council Chambers. The purpose of this public hearing will be here comments on proposed ordinance 2014-1, which amends Chapter 213 of the Code of the Town of North Branford entitled Taxation. Public comments on this matter are welcome. A copy of the proposed ordinance is on file in the office of the town clerk and posted on the town's website, dated at the North Branford, Connecticut, this fifth day of March 2014. This publication was on the sound March 13, 2014. Okay, the hearing's open for public comment. On the proposed budget. Roger, please state your name and address.
Roger Muck, Walnut Lane. I'm assuming this has to do with adding money to the amount that's available for the senior tax relief. Am I correct?
Yes.
I think you guys are doing a tremendous job. You're trying to do something for seniors, but as I've been trying to do for the past five years, it's not enough. You really have to set parameters to where there's an income limit on this, you've got to set up parameters where there's longevity in town, and you've got to increase the amount. And what I'm aiming at, like I said for years and years, you've got to get a tax raise in this town. I know the people back here all want more money, more money, more money, but unfortunately, and Tony, you even told me about half an hour ago, that very, very few people out here have any money. So, we're all sitting here asking for more money, more money, more money, and people just don't have it. There's people, everybody's working, if you go to a food store, everybody's, we're living on plastic. Everybody's pulling out plastic for everything, and then they pay, 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 and they never get paid off. So, we're making a bunch of poor people, and we're still asking for more money. What's happening, that I just heard a little while ago, is the Board of Education, as an example, are eliminating teachers. Teachers at a school, that's what the teachers are for, not middle management. I've been talking to this town council for 10 years about getting rid of middle management in the town side and in the Board of Education side. Don't need them. Industry's doing it coast to coast. Industries, get rid of middle management, not necessary, non-value added. And if you do one of those charrettes, like I've mentioned that before, one of the charrettes like they did a couple of weekends ago, if you do one of those, you'll find out that middle management is not necessary, anywhere. And you keep the teachers, they're the ones that do the teaching, not assistant secretaries, assistant principals, assistant to the assistant to the assistant. You've got to stop spending money on nothing, is what it boils down to, on unnecessary things. The town garage, they need stuff. They need trucks, they need equipment. The fire department needs equipment. The police don't need any more new squad cars. You know, I mean, the crap, every year he's putting up squad cars, he needs more squad cars. Don't need them. Those squad cars work good. Most of the time, we get rid of our squad cars, where they go New Haven, they run them for 10 years. Why can't they run them here? So, what everybody's got to do here is you've got to sit down and you've got to stand back and say, where's the most important parts of this? Nobody, nobody out here is getting raises, for one. Nobody in the industry is getting raises, nobody's getting any raises. Teachers are getting raises. The police are getting raises. Whoa, that's got to stop. Somebody's got to look at the union and say, back off, you're not getting nothing. And if nobody up there can do it, I can do it. You know, the unions come up, we need this. Then it goes to the state of Connecticut, goes to arbitration. You know what they're going to do? They're going to say, you're going to give them the raise. Who are they to know what this town can afford to pay? They don't know. And the people up here has got to say, we don't care about your arbitration, we don't care about your union, we don't care about your request. This is the money you've got, spend it. It's that simple. That's what you do at home, that's the way everybody does it at home. What you have at home, that's what you deal with, that's what you spend for the year. If you can't afford it, you don't buy it. We just keep asking for more money. The government does that, too. So, somebody's got to change something.
I wish it was that easy, Roger. Believe me.
Well, it's easy for you, you know, if you don't have the money, what do you do? You don't spend any money.
Roger, I know. My business, I do things I need to do to survive.
Right.
But that's...
But you can't say, hey, I need more money. I can't say, hey, Social Security, send me some more money, I don't have it.
Roger, fighting a whole different mindset than private industry, it's just not the same.
Well, I know it.
The deck is stacked against you.
But what did I say? Step out the box, get that mindset.
There's only a few things we can possibly do, Roger, and we will work very hard as a group, I'm sure.
Well, I know you will. This council is, I've said before, the best one we've had in years and years and years, and it's been staying the same way. But what I'm saying is just think a little different than what you've been thinking.
We'll try our best.
How are you? Steve Torino, Clintonville Road. I get what the town manager has said and Roger. The things that the budget that was approved by the Board of Fire Commissioners this year really seriously needs to be approved. For those of you who don't know, which is, I would probably say, over 80% of our town, almost half of our residential areas have no water, no fire hydrants. It's not that, it's 2014, and this is a new revelation, and however, talking about priorities, obligations, safety, going forward. We do the best job that we do all the time with the resources that we have, however, I don't know what it's going to take down the road for us to realize what a desperate need approving this current budget as proposed by the Board of Fire Commissioners would do. There's next to nothing in training. We have standards, regulations, et cetera. We're an OSHA state, we must follow that. I can't speak, but not sure if we're going to meet those, because there's no money. I understand, thank you very much. You got us new gear four years ago. If we go into a fire or a crash, et cetera, we rip our gear, are you going to tell us to come back in four years for gear? Because you gave it to us four years ago. Some of our equipment works. Let me rephrase that. Some of our equipment is not working up to its capability. We have trucks that are in the 80s or 1990. And thank you for getting us tires. It's seven or eight years past, but thank you. But you have to look at your priority as a town council, and if you truly say that you care about the safety of our residents and the concern and well-being of this town, then I don't think you can continue to make us operate on a half a million dollar budget. I mean, it's almost absurd. For everybody in the room that doesn't know, you know, I'm not a math teacher, math major, but...
Steve, I'm going to let you continue, but this public hearing is on the taxation.
Yep.
So, we've got to get on point.
Yep. On the taxes. If you break down those taxes, you're paying less than $40 a person. So, it's less than $40 a person per year, break it down by your budget for fire service. So, I think that's sad and insulting. Thank you.
Thank you. This public hearing is on the senior taxation and not on the proposed budget. So, if anyone else has further comment on the senior taxation? Close the public hearing.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah.
Yeah, I need to close the public hearing.
I'll second that.
Moved by Councilor Fawnin, seconded by Councilor Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
All right. Item four, reports of committees, boards, and commissions. Item A, Permanent Project Building Committee Legal Notice, invitation to bid North Branford High School Roof.
Anthony, we voted to close the meeting, we didn't vote on the resolution, right?
Oh, later on.
Yeah, there was a permanent project building committee meeting that met March 10 to discuss a variety of issues, of course, the MBA high school roof project, and that's just thrown in there as an FYI, that it's, you know, it's going out on the street. You'll have that, I think we have a, I think it's this Thursday for the mandatory pre-bid walkthrough and then bid openings, I believe, for April 3. So, that piece is moving along, and hopefully, the market is such that we'll get a good response. That's what Michelle had indicated to the committee, that number of calls and responses. So, that is going through. They got an update on the bathroom situation, the additional bathroom for the Stanley T. Williams Community Center, and that's going full steam ahead, thanks in part to Fran and Public Works and the school side as well, John Florio, making that happen for a fraction of what we would have paid in total had we used the architect. So, that's moving along as well. Kurt and Fran met with an electrical engineer to begin to, you know, look at the exterior, you know, the parking lot and lights. So, we need that piece in terms of knowing where to put the panel and running conduit and bases and all of that. So, that's moving along. In addition, they took care of some other items within their scope in terms of signage that they had to do for the project. And Michelle is working on the contacting someone with respect to the problem with the auditorium and the water. So, hopefully, at the next meeting, we'll have some progress to report with respect to trying to solve, getting somebody on board to try and help us solve that problem. And they'll meet again next month.
Item B, Board of Education, Town Council Communications Subcommittee. We met to Councilor Angeloni, Town Manager, Superintendent, Vice Chair Marcia Norfrio, and Dave McMahon was there. And there were discussion on the security grant about applying for approximately, I think, 40 to 60,000, which would be matching funds. So, they are looking at putting that together. The MB, North Branford High School Roof Ventilators were also discussed, a number of units and approximate cost. The review of the school roof projects and the Stanley Williams lighting in the parking, shared parking lot over there, there was a layout done, and the Board of Ed expressed that they did not want to spend dollars on the lights, they really want to keep their money in their budget for the schools. And under New Business, it was mentioned about doing a rental or a lease of the school buildings to, with the town and the Board of Ed. And that was pretty much the communications meeting.
What was the rental agreement with the Board of Ed? A lease or a rental agreement?
Yeah, I mean, it was just briefly, you know, it was mentioned by Dave McMahon of, like, the town being the landlord and drawing up a lease and having, you know, like a leased tenant situation for the town and the school system.
Could you say that again, Anthony?
I think it was a concep, I think just, you know...
Conceptually?
Conceptually, yeah, put out there where the town would be like the landlord of the buildings and actually draw up a lease and take over, you know, the buildings.
Well, the town actually owned the buildings?
Well, I mean, right now, it's...
Take care of the maintenance, is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, I mean, actually assume titleship of, you know, the buildings and, you know...
The town owns the buildings.
Right. Well, it weren't, yeah. But I mean, this is just what was discussed.
Well, I don't understand what was discussed, though.
You know what, so we can discuss this where it belongs, can, this agenda, can we amend it? I'd like to add that discussion in action on where we go to New Business and...
Aye.
Can I? Discussing an action based on the town and the Board of Ed being, entering some kind of a building agreement.
Make that aye on New Business, Al? I'll second the motion.
Moved by Councilor Rose, seconded by Councilor Fucy.
And so, for discussion on it, so you guys know where I'm coming from, for years, and that's why we've got to find out what they were talking about, but for years, it's been mentioned and kicked around that, you know, the town owns the buildings, but if we took control of the buildings, number one, there'd be no finger pointing at who's supposed to be taken care of it, and number two, the Board of Ed then can worry about educating the children instead of about what needs a new roof or any of that stuff. So, I open that, because for years, I thought that the town should be taken care of, taking care of the buildings, so...
Is it done by virtue of the public works, you mean, taken care of?
What's that?
By virtue of the public works?
Well, if you're a tenant and a lease, it would be that we would be in charge of the buildings, the maintenance and all that, and they would just be our tenant.
Does that mean they're cleaning, too?
I don't know, I didn't bring this up. I'm just saying that for years, I thought that this is a good way to, you know, in my own mind. So, I think that where the Board of Ed brought it up, we should discuss it.
Al, do you know, is it done anywhere else that way that you know of? Or, I mean, just thinking out of the box kind of thing?
I don't know.
I mean, I was thinking outside of the box. Okay, no, just for discussion, I, you know...
I actually believe that we've had conversations on this...
You hold it down back there, please.
With the town attorney. I believe in past discussions that it is allowed, that, you know, that, you know, the schools get it and sometimes it can be construed as a slush fund for their budgets. But there are some towns, some places, that they take care of the buildings and the schools there, so...
Okay.
So, if the Board of Ed wants to get rid of the maintenance on the buildings and stuff, I think that that's a good idea. But that doesn't mean the rest of you do it. But again, I don't know what was said there, so that's why I wanted to put on the agenda.
I mean, I don't have the actual minutes, I was just kind of... I was brought up.
All right, well...
All right, well, we have a motion, Councilor Rose, seconded by Councilor Fucy. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Fucy?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
Item C, Economic Development Commission Report Marketing Analysis.
Yes, at the last council meeting, I mentioned they had the market analysis, the committee commission met, and that you have in your packet with respect to the parcel at 1599 Foxen Road. So, wanted you all to have a copy of that, and, you know, certainly, if there are any questions I can bring to the Economic Development Commission and/or to the consultant that we have on this, so.
Well, when I read this, from what it looked like to me, it said that our younger population is going to be decreasing and our older population is going to be increasing. And... And basically what it said is, all our kids who are graduating are leaving the state because it's just not a good environment job-wise and everything else. So, my thinking is that our class sizes are going to continue to be getting smaller if this report is true, from what I read in here. And it looks like we're going to have a lot more seniors living around here than younger families growing up. And, you know, it's something for us to think about in our future planning and what we're going to do. And that's basically all I have to say on the report.
Okay. So, they're working right now, the commission, at this point, gathering data from the Department of Transportation, trying to gather layout, property lines, contours, and so forth, to try to plot the parcel out accurately because of all of the work that was done in that area for Route eighty-one thirty-nine. So, they're working on this, and we'll continue to look at the, work with the consultant on how do we, you know, get this to a point where we talked about, where you actually have a package you can put together as a, and create an RFP for developers. And they're excited about working it, and their energy level's high. So, I'll keep reporting back and let you know what kind of progress they're making.
It also kind of said homeownership was going down, and rentals is probably like a way to go, from what I got out of it, too.
Rental, at this point in time, rental is an op-
Because of the options to get a mortgage right now, they're like they were thirty years ago, where you actually have to have fifteen to twenty percent down to get a mortgage. And people don't have that kind of money. So, they're saying the renters' market is going to be much greater than the single housing market.
I thought it was very comprehensive and very thoughtful. And very interesting in terms of the competition that we have in the towns that we don't have a lot of neighbors stores. I thought it was very comprehensive.
Yeah, I think so, too. For me, it was just, you know, the validation to say that, yes, this is a viable opportunity because of the size and location. And, you know, just, again, trying to get all of the necessary information we need to create the best possible package so that we entice the most amount of the developers that we can. So, I'll keep, certainly keep you posted, keep this in, on the agenda.
Thank you. Item five, Town Managers Report, Item A, Overview of Steep Grant Application, two thousand and fourteen.
Yeah, I put in a, I put in an overview outline, or if you will, a memo in the packet, and then also gave you in the folder a supplemental on the steep application. Basically, it's due April fifteenth, and wanted to just let you know where I'm headed on this because I also met with the Parks and Recreation Commission last night and got their feedback on that. So, that's what the supplement is, and basically, the overall picture was to say, let's take this steep opportunity, a steep grant, to go after funding to replace and renovate the tennis courts and basketball courts. So, I've, you know, given you that, those locations in terms of the MBIS, Stanley T. Williams, and Northford Park. And in discussion last night, you know, something similar to the discussion we've had here with respect to capital, if we can get this funded through steep, great, if we, you know, rather than trying to fund it through our capital or CIP program. Now, the likelihood is, we can put in, the cap is five hundred thousand, likelihood of us getting five hundred thousand dollars is probably slim to none, but if we could get two hundred fifty, what's the priority? How do we do that? So, they came up with the fact that they thought that the Stanley T. Williams Community Center, in looking at those courts first and converting two of them to basketball courts, because there's four up there now, and adding a splash park and pavilion because there's no shade, to fund that is the first priority. If you get all half a million, you can do that and MBIS. But if you don't, you do that, and then you do MBIS, and then Northford Park as a subsequent later-
The schools play at MBIS.
Yes.
So, we have to take care of that.
Right, and I think we're faced, they're faced with that every year, that they've got to take care of that in terms of patching and doing what they need to do to get it, get it ready. But that was, that was the, you know, recommendation in terms of the-
I have a problem with them wanting a splash park and some of these other things. When you're talking, in your original memo, you talk about how important it is to fix some of the cracks and some of those tennis courts and the other parks. I can't understand why they would not want to do that as a priority over a splash park and a pavilion. I mean, it seems to, you know, in your original memo, some of those courts are dangerous and need to be repaired.
Yeah.
I have a problem with that, with going, you know, pavilion and a splash park over fixing the tennis courts.
Yeah, okay.
Six Flags North Branford.
Well, and just, and I think their rationale was that it is because of the, you know, community center location, you know, that would be the location to have it because of the, the-
I know, but I still think, you know, you talk about the danger of some of the cracks and some of those courts.
Yeah.
To me, that's a priority.
Yeah, and that's what I'm looking for in terms of, guys, to say, does it make sense to go, you know, MBIS, Stanley T. Williams, or vice versa, and Northford as a third? Because we're not, even the five hundred, like I said in the memo, you know, those are old numbers without any contingency and/or inflation-adjusted numbers.
Yeah, but the real economy is those numbers might not change either, Michael.
Well, that's-
There's a lot of competition out there, too.
Possibility, yeah.
I agree with Marie, I think it's kind of-
No Six Flags?
The economy we have, we use the money for things we actually need, and a splash park isn't one of them.
Maybe you could bring the hose out, and we'll be all set.
Okay. Well, how would you, you know, then I think we're faced with, we're faced with the three that we have, and although I was trying to try and squeeze, based on those numbers, try to squeeze all three into the application, I think there ought to be, I'd like to be able to write it to the state to say that we can still accomplish some of the work without losing the whole grant. So, if they, so if they want to fund us at two hundred fifty, yes, we can, if we submit for five hundred, can you do the project? Yeah, we can still do it for two fifty, that sort of thing. So, I need a priority of Stanley T. Williams, convert those, two and two, or go to MBIS, do that first, then Stanley T., then Northford.
Got to remember the schools play on MBIS, that's a big thing.
Yeah, right.
Okay.
I mean, I think all the courts need work.
They all do.
I think we could spend-
But we got our kids from the schools playing on, on the ones at MBIS.
If we got half a million, I'm sure we can spend on every one of the courts we have.
Do the best we can, pal, you know. But you got to get the money first.
I could put MBIS as top priority and go to Stanley T. and Northford in that order.
Yeah, I mean, I-
Why wouldn't we focus on repairing what we have rather than either trying to add or-
We can't take care of what we have.
Change tennis courts to basketball courts? If we have basketball courts down the street at Northford Park, why convert two tennis courts at Stanley T. Williams to basketball courts? Why not repair them, get them functional as tennis courts? And to the extent money's available, rehabilitate the basketball courts at North, at Northford Park. The option to use it isn't going to be enhanced because it's in the center of Northford as opposed to two and a half miles up the road. Let's just get what we have, repair it, make it functional, and not worry about adding additional amenities in this economy.
Well, I can, you know, tell you what they, how they approached it last night. And that's to say that those four courts at Stanley T. Williams have been offline for roughly six, seven years. And they, and the way they look at it, and they discuss it, you know, basketball versus tennis, the demands for any sport are, you know, I guess, up and down, cyclical, if you will. They felt, well, gee, if we're gonna, if we're going in in a wholesale renovation, these aren't patch jobs, these are, these are about putting in new courts, that why wouldn't you try to create two and two?
Which ones do you bring in?
At this point, I don't have that in front of me, I don't know. We'd have to, you'd have to come to the, to the bid.
I don't think there's an overwhelming demand for the use of any of those courts as basketball or tennis courts. I mean, I drive by the Northford Courts at least twice a day, and I do see kids out there once in a while.
Oh, in the summer, though, Northford's, the basketball courts are going pretty good. Because that's basically that, or the MBIS courts in town, and that's it. So, they're both kind of one end of town each. But, I don't know, is this worth discussion right now? Do we have to have it nailed down to what exactly?
April fifteenth, he's got to have the grant.
So, we have to have it nailed down to what we want to do with the money and where it has to go.
I think they're going to want to know the specific.
I mean, we also have our summer camps that are run, too, and I think that might play into it. The summer camps are-
So, that would say Stanley T. Williams and MBIS as opposed to Northford Park.
Right.
Yeah, and I think that's the rationale they had with respect to summer camps and growing, you know, opportunity that hasn't been there for seven years, you open it up, they thought, they felt, given the synergy around the community center that you would have with, you know, new parking lights, parking lot, and, you know, just exposure, I guess, I don't know.
We can rough it out in Northford.
Not to say that, you know, a subsequent round could take care of that, too.
I mean, I want to ask-
But in this round, I'm thinking MBIS, it sounds like it's-
So, MBIS and Stanley T., what do you think, right?
I'm going to ask Fran a quick question if I could. On the courts, we had at one time prioritized and looked at all the courts.
Yes.
Can you read?
Well, they're, they're, they're all done in nineteen ninety-five or six.
Fran, I hate to do it to you, can you come up to the microphone?
Nineteen ninety-four. Just so you know, they're not repaired.
Come up here.
All the courts were done in nineteen ninety-four, completely redone, and they're, that's the way they have to, it's not a repair. They are reconstruction, meaning that you're going to have fence work, ripped up the whole thing and repaved. So, you're, you know, two hundred thousand, you may get two courts, two, two, two parks, maybe. Memorial Park is going to take most of the money, I mean, at MBIS, between the basketball courts and all those tennis courts. All new nets, fencing, the basketball hoops can be saved, but the rest of it's, and the same thing with Northford Park. Northford Park's in bad shape, it's got heaves in it. You know, the asphalt's done its time.
Right.
Part of it is that they never, we never really recoded them after they were done the first time. Never, we had repair and painted, but it's just, it's all shrinking. So, it is a replacement.
Because I seem to remember some major cracks up there.
Where? All of it.
And all of them, right?
All of them have the same cracks.
So, I don't think we-
Not one is any worse than the other. I think the priority is which ones get used the most, and you work, work the other way.
Right.
And unfortunately, Stanley T. Williams has been out of service for a while, at least six or seven years.
Isn't there a problem underneath that court, there was some problem, I didn't know.
At Stanley T.?
Yeah.
Yeah, they got, they had some rocks heaving up through the courts, that's what really did it. I don't know if it was frost, probably the frost pushed them up through, and it was on one, the one end of the course. They're, it's dangerous, so you can't play in them, you break an ankle.
So, eighty-six is Six Flags, and Stanley T. and North Branford are intermediate.
And the, and the numbers aren't getting any better, you know, it's, the numbers for paving and-
So, we should-
TillCon are going up on their tax.
Yeah.
So, we should look at-
I mean, you got, it's going to be a priority setting, which ones we think are more, more used. I mean, the high school does use the courts down there for tournaments, that's something to consider.
I mean, the Route eighty courts have to be the heavily used.
I would think so, yes. Yeah, you got all of them there, they're all being used, the basketball courts-
I mean, they're lit, you know.
Northford Park, it's to Northford's Park, probably, but, I mean, Stanley T. hasn't been used in seven years to be closed, they're locked up.
Right.
So.
And that is the new community center, too, so.
Yeah, so we should look at MBIS and Stanley T.
Well, I think then we should, the priority should be the Route eighty first.
Right.
Yeah.
That's what everybody uses the most of.
Yeah.
Now, on that, Fran, is it, what's the, when they come in and rebuild, is it rip the pavement up and just repave it? Or can we get someone to do some under drains or something? I mean, if you have, if you get water out of the equation, pavement will last a long time.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, the problem is it's a swamp.
Right.
Yeah, the thing is built on a swamp, there's no joke. You know, it's, you know, the ground is, we've ground them up, so they're actually coming out of the ground more, but it's a swamp. I mean, I think it'd be an unbelievable task to try to actually drain it. There is a main, that big, what is it, thirty, there's a thirty-inch pipe that goes right underneath all of them. That's the one that dumps out right at eighty? You know, that takes the water that comes off-
By Walt's, right.
What was that?
The one by Walt that goes down, by Walt's on eighty?
No, no, right, 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 you mean, you have that little bridge there?
Oh, okay.
There's a thirty-inch pipe that goes up and takes the water that comes off the TillCon mountain, and that goes right underneath the tennis courts and the basketball court.
I always hated playing at Colter Field.
Yeah, well, the Colter Field's in, right in the middle of the swamp.
Yep.
But, and it was all filled, it's all filled land. I mean, I got pictures of them building it, the town actually built them years ago. Built it and put the pipe in and-
Even before us, Fran.
Yeah, it is before us, definitely, so.
I think we got it, right?
Yeah, we got it.
Fran, thank you.
So, it sounded like the consensus is MBIS first, Stanley T. will second.
Stanley T. will second.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Item B, RFP Notice for Reappraisal and Reevaluation of Real Property for Two Thousand and Fifteen Grand List.
Yeah, that was just put on there as an FYI, that we're, you know, it's out there, and we're going to have to go through that process, and I gave you a copy of that. It's that time of year, that time again.
How often are we doing that? Is it still at five years now?
Five.
Every five now?
Five, five statute.
Now, the reality is, they went to five because the property values were going up so fast, they thought they were missing something. Where they're stagnant now, it's a waste of money to do it every five years.
Right, it was every ten.
So, what's the punishment if we don't do it?
You can actually get into a bill.
Excuse me, could you come up to the microphone if you're going to speak and state your name? I can't have people shouting from the audience.
Melinda Ponda, I live on Lanes Pond. If you would like to not go forward with the revaluation, there is a bill out there, the legislature, that you can get in on if you choose to not go forward. For fourteen and fifteen, you can, and then I think you would have to do it in sixteen.
You don't, oh, just a one-year thing?
I'm not sure how the bill is written, but you can opt into that bill. There are several towns in the state on it.
So, what's everybody seeing in the real estate? Is the property values creeping up?
No, it's not going up.
I didn't think so.
So, I mean, what happens if the property values go down?
These things cost like two, three hundred thousand? We did a lot better last time by using a postcard system.
Yeah.
What did it cost us the last time?
It was the two hundred thousand dollars. It was, it was less expensive, you're right, Chuck.
Well, why don't we bump it a year if we can? That would probably be the smartest thing to do.
I think we should do that.
Absolutely, it's not going to change. It's just going to throw that money away.
It's basically throwing money away because it's not going to change dramatically.
So, we'll have to throw it away in a year, but maybe we'd have money in a year.
Seventeen, eighteen.
And there's no guarantee, right?
No.
I think if we can postpone it a year, I don't see how it hurts us.
Well.
Does anybody think it hurts us?
No.
No.
No, anyone that might know.
Right.
I can answer that if you'd like.
Go ahead, answer it, if anyone else doesn't like.
Problem is that you're going to burden our tax payers even more if it comes out like that, too.
Yeah, but it will affect us.
What's the downside?
Well, the downside is, if you, well, I know you've actually just settled some court cases, but there may be cases where you settled and maybe were probably shouldn't have settled, and those people are getting a discount a little bit longer. There's also shifts in the market, just because it's not rising up. There are, could be areas of town, I'm not familiar with the exact layout of how values are in the town that I work in. Areas of town have shifted where some are significantly more, some are level and some are down. And the idea of revaluation is to redistribute and be fair and equitable to everyone so that you're not overpaying. Excuse me. So, that's the idea, is to redistribute value. Can I answer your question? So, and revaluation was changed to every five years because going ten years, it was too far out. People were appealing to appeal, they were appealing because maybe their values had dropped in that ten-year cycle. Redistributing value, realigning your values, realigning your mill rate. Values go up, mill rate goes down. Values go down, mill rate goes up, still paying the same.
Right, so the number's the same, they just play with the numbers in between, the mill rate.
So, basically, we're going to spend hundred thousand dollars and play with the numbers.
Right.
I think if we get a one-year extension, then we should, I don't see, I don't think it'll hurt us a lot.
You should look at your bid, you should really talk to, see what your, how your values have changed in town. If you have complete inequities all over town, it's in your best interest because then you're treating all the people in your town fairly.
So, are we going to just talk to Kristen, probably?
Well, by the same, by the same- Well, by the same, by the same analogy, though, five years ago, we thought we treated everybody equal, right?
That's right.
And a lot of people, and, and a lot of people took us to court and won.
Right.
The, the reason other towns do it is to try to defer it to the commercial and the businesses, but we don't have a base like that here in the town right now, so I don't see a huge change.
But I think if we can get on that, if we can get on that, we should postpone it a year.
What do you guys think? Doesn't bother the man? At least it'll be status quo for another year.
Do we need to do anything to do that?
Well, I'd rather have Christine make the call and have her at the next meeting, perhaps.
All right, good.
Yeah, that's what I think. Let's talk to Christine at the next meeting.
Sounds good to me.
The bid opening is scheduled for this Thursday at eleven AM.
Of course. And I'm sure, and I'm sure you're already, when he said that you can refuse all bids.
Yes, absolutely.
Good.
All right. Community events and presentations. Item seven, citizen statements, petitions, correspondence. Item A, letter from RWA, Ron Walters regarding change in his permit application, Lake Gaylord, parking, generator and filter, waste reservoir, and emergency overflow.
Yeah, nothing for act, it's just a, it's just an FYI.
Well, it's actually required by statute for them to give us notice. I think it's fifteen days before their application. Whenever they're doing anything that could possibly affect the land or the quality of the water, which is governed by the Department of Public Health, they have to make an application. And while this letter doesn't sound like it's going to be terribly dramatic or traumatic, they're just complying with the statute. And whatever they're going to do will be, whether or not their application gets granted will depend on the effect, if any, of that, it has in the quality of the water system and other lands.
I believe-
So for our purposes, it's just, someone else is gonna be making decisions, an expert on this, in the Department of Public Health or whatever.
No, not anymore.
They've got a two million dollar generator, too, we could tax. Item B, letter to John Jasmine regarding Sean's farm subdivisions.
This just has to do with me looking over the form of a deed and a map that was to be filed, which I did on the day after that letter with Carol Z, and all that information was filed, subject to my, my review of it, which was okay.
Item C, letter from John Jezz regarding opinion number LO dash zero zero one dash two thousand fourteen, and North Branford, seven thirty Forest Road, Northbury, Connecticut.
Well, this was a legal opinion requested by the Planning and Zoning Commission involving the old Amados, and the owners of the property-
John, it's a little tough to hear you down here in the cheap seats.
Change seats?
Cheap seats.
Oh. I care myself either.
They gotta pay big money, he can't hear you either.
This was a legal opinion, the owners of the property had filed an application to essentially rebuild what was the clubhouse, which was a clubhouse, and it was used by a nonprofit group that had membership, which was allowed to use it in part as a bar on the ground floor, and I believe a, they also used the main floor for renting out for social events. And that's permitted under the zoning regulations as a, as a use to a nonprofit club. The present owners basically wanted to replicate that, only they, only thing that was open to them was, since they're in a profit-making business, was to try and reconstruct the building under an ordinance that we have that allows for the preservation of important architectural or historical buildings. This, this building that was there that burned down was built in nineteen eighty-five for the, for the Veterans Association, the VA, and there was nothing there to conserve, essentially, or to preserve, or to adapt to what is otherwise a prohibited use in a residential area, namely a pizza place on the first, on the bottom floor, and similar use on the main floor for renting it out for, for profit. And so that's, that was my opinion, and it's, you have the entire opinion. I don't know what, I don't know what planning and zoning has done-
Basically, if they wanna do it, they have to go before planning and zoning again to start bringing them, or variance.
Well, they really can't get a variance because of, the hardship, there has to be an extraordinary hardship. In other words, the property almost has to be valueless unless they can do that. They would basically have to be able to say, look, if we can't build this building and use it for the business that we want to use it, this land is useless and-
Is that what they did the first time when they changed the order?
No, no, the, here's the, here's the subtlety here, the first time for the VA, the VA, there is a statute, they could do what they did because they're a nonprofit club with membership.
Right, but then how did it become a pizza place?
It hasn't become a pizza place, that's what they'd like to, that's what they'd like to do with it.
Right, but it became that after the VFW.
Correct.
So how did it become a pizza place after the VFW?
Well, that was my question, and you'll notice that in the opinion. Nobody asked me, nobody asked me to render an opinion at that time, and I think, and I think I said it in one line as respectfully as I could by saying, the rationale was not apparent to me. I, I have no idea-
Those are those deals.
I have no idea what the thinking was on that.
Gotcha.
So then, so now we're left with basically a foundation, and you can't put the cart before the horse, even if there were some people who could argue that this was a historic, well, it really can't be argued as a historically significant building, so actually, that ordinance requires that it be listed in a certain North Branford architectural book in order for it to, you know, qualify. This is a situation where you have a factory in a residential zone, basically, they wanna make them into condos, that type of thing.
Right, we have a dilemma now that we have a piece of land that could produce tax income, right? More tax income than it does, and we can't do anything with it, is what you're saying?
No, 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 not, we, first of all, we don't, you and I don't own it.
I know that, but I'm saying is these people can't open a business and start paying taxes.
Well, I think, and I may be, I may, I may be incorrect, I think they applied for, initially, to put some condominiums there, and the planning and zoning did not approve the number of condominiums. And that's just what I think, I'm not positive of that, and I'm, I'm sure that the number of condominiums has a great deal to do with whether the project is gonna be-
I'm just, my point I'm just trying to get across is, obviously, we have budget issues, obviously, we need to bring in businesses and tax dollars to this town, so I would think it would be in our best interest to try and assist these people, and seeing what we can do together to make them have a viable investment and us have some tax dollars coming in.
And nobody disagrees with that, except you can't violate the law.
I don't wanna violate the law.
And you can't, you cannot put a commercial operation in the middle of a residential zone, you can't do it. Now, maybe they, you know-
But, just, wasn't that what was going on here? Wasn't it a commercial operation before it burnt down? I mean-
Yeah, but that was a brother-in-law type fix.
I said that I don't know how they got that approval. It wasn't, I wasn't involved in that, I don't-
But they did because it was, I mean, it was an operating restaurant.
We're, we're mixing apples and oranges. John was asked for an opinion, his opinion is they can't do this. He's right. What they can do with the town's cooperation is come in for a zone change, that's not our bailiwick, it's something-
Well, that's what I was trying to get to, but I couldn't, like, get the answer.
Well, there's a problem with the zone change, too. This is what's called spot zoning is illegal. Now, if the town decides to do something, they can change the zone, they can request that a zone change be made, that's a legislative act, that's a, that's an ordinance, there's gonna be public hearings, but it is illegal to say, okay, what I wanna do is change this three-acre parcel right in the middle of the residential zone to a, an industrial zone or a commercial zone. That's illegal also, but, but that would be probably the only chance that they would have to put a, a commercial operation.
Well, that's great, but what I'm just trying to get, point is, instead of all this mumbo jumbo, we should try to, to help these people any way we possibly can, instead of just telling them it can't be done.
Well, I, I can't help you there, Fran, I'm just not smart, well, I'm not smart enough, I tell you. All I have to do, all I can do-
Is give an opinion, I know.
Well, I give you an opinion based on the law.
Right.
I don't give it to you based on public policy-
Right.
Or, you know, I, I-
I know, it's not your fault, I'm just trying to get myself informed so we can maybe expedite this thing and get something going for our town.
Yeah, there's no question, I agree with you a hundred percent.
Okay, thank you.
Well, that's a shame. That's not beyond hope, they can, they can, with cooperation from the town, they can do something there.
That's what I'm trying to get at.
They just can't do it the way they wanna do it, that's all.
Right, exactly.
All this opinion said is they can't, it's not gonna be grandfathered in.
Yep.
Okay, that's all it says, in a nutshell. It's like, you know what?
Find out how we can help them, Mike.
Good try, but it's not gonna happen, okay? You know, so you gotta start at the beginning.
Right, exactly, do it the right way.
Now, since, since we're on this, did we, did we have a lien on that property before it was sold for taking it down, and did we get paid?
We got paid.
Yeah, we got paid.
Yes, yes.
Great.
Item eight, resignations and appointments. Item nine, unfinished business discussion in action. Item A, still tabled, right?
Yep.
Right.
Item B, audit report on school grants by Michelle.
Yeah, Michelle can't be here tonight, she, in fact, I think she, she had an issue with scheduling and was sick and had to reschedule, I think she's gonna meet with Don Thursday, yeah.
Hasn't this been deferred because of her unavailability like-
Yeah.
A number of times. I think only two times. Well, we weren't even sure, we were just carrying it because when she gave her reports, she said she had some issues she was trying to clear up, so we just said, carry it on the, you know, carry it and let us know when you got it cleared up.
Yeah, and-
That's all we did.
So we'll carry it again.
So if she's meeting with Don, she must be clearing him up then, and then it, and I don't know that she needs to come back.
I think she did come back.
She did have a schedule earlier, and she was ill and she had canceled, and so we rescheduled the Thursday about the autumn.
So then, carry it, see if you can get it back.
Yeah, for the first, yeah. Yeah, my understanding is you wanted her back here, so, yeah.
Yeah, we still do.
Okay. Yeah, we'll carry that.
Yeah, we'll carry that, we'll carry it on the next agenda. Item C, approval of contract with LHS Associates regarding voting machine maintenance agreement.
Yeah, this was the one that didn't have the date in, in it, it came, came in today, so it's in your, it should be, it should be-
In that folder you left us?
Yeah, it should be in the folder where John had asked that, even though it was typed on the bottom of the page, that it go into the body of the, of the letter, so. That's what you have.
Is this what you used before, the same document?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You used before?
Yeah.
Right. Yeah, and it was just a, you know, it's a one-year contract, for whatever reason, they printed it at the bottom rather than saying that in the, in the contract, body of the line.
Which tier were you recommending?
It was tier one, that way, yeah.
I'll make the motion to move, to approve the contract with LHS Associates for the annual tier one maintenance plan.
I'll second that.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Ready for a discussion? Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucie?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item ten, new business discussion in action. Item A, Greater New Haven Transit District Regional Rides.
I'm looking at the motion, I'm looking to consider being part of the Greater New Haven Transit District Regional Rides program in conjunction with our elderly and disabled transportation program. Also write to Town Manager Michael T. Paulus to prepare and execute all documents that, as outlined in the letter, requested dated March sixth, seventh, March seventh, twenty fourteen.
I'll second that.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Before we get a roll call, I just have one question on the regional, was there any cost or-
Change in costs?
Change in costs on this?
Because I don't see anything here.
The reason I'm asking is because the Cosgrove Animal Shelter, you know, went up thirty-six thousand, and we just kinda approved that, didn't we?
I think there was a slight change, but- I don't, I don't have the backup with me at this point. It's not in here.
I, I would like to know what the cost or if there's a change in cost before I vote on it.
Sure.
I would, um-
I'll, I'll withdraw my motion, hurry, let's put it on the next agenda.
Yeah.
I'll withdraw my motion.
I would just like to know the cost, too.
Wait a minute, next agenda, it says here, all paperwork has to be backed by the end of the month.
Oh, well.
Well, then, can we, is there any way we could just find?
I mean, we'll have a meeting on the, I can call, I'm not sure it's a problem or not, but we'll have a meeting on April first.
Right, but can we make the motion contingent of-
Yeah, contingent upon finding out what-
We don't wanna lose transportation and elderly and disabled.
Yeah, I'll move it.
Well.
Depending-
And why do we get these things? Why are we, always have it gone to our head?
I have, I have a letter, the request for next year's budget, and there's a base rate of twenty-five hundred dollars, which hasn't changed, and the per capita went from eighteen cents to nineteen cents per capita, so. This current year, it's five thousand eighty-eight dollars ninety-four cents, next year, it's five thousand two thirty-two point seven seven.
Perfect, thanks, yeah.
I'll remake my motion.
Yeah, I'll, I'll second it.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucie?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item B, renewal of household hasway central membership.
Is this, this thing for Tia, or not Mike? I don't know what the last one was.
This seems very expensive, what was it last year?
Anthony, you have that picture of that? I think it was, it's up slightly, I thought it was...
Seven thousand five forty-six.
Up what?
Couple hundred dollars it went up.
That's all?
Yeah.
Seventy-five forty-six.
Just barely.
Yeah, we have fifteen, yeah, about $500, right?
Yeah.
Up $200?
Yeah, it was...
Five.
Fifteen, six fifty-five is your current year budget, fifteen, nine thirty-four is next year's budget.
Did you move that? Did you make the motion?
I made it, I'm ready, second.
Is there some motion?
There wasn't a motion.
I didn't think so.
No, there is a motion.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
Moved by Counselor Fawnin, seconded by Counselor Diamond. Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item C, Proposed Ordinance 2014-1 Taxation, Section 213-16, Limitations on Credits Granted.
Yeah, there's a, also a revised in your, in your folder, just in terms of formatting, the suggested motion is basically the same, but I just wanted to be consistent with past, past motions, that's all, so it's a revised taxation, should we decide to approve it.
I'll move the motion.
Second.
Moved by Counselor Fucy, seconded by Counselor Caprio.
I'm sorry, Mike, could you just repeat what you said you changed in formatting?
Yeah, the, the original sent out to you, I, under suggested motion, be it hereby resolved versus I move that the town, town council adopts the proposed ordinance.
Okay, I can live with that. Thanks.
Sure.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item D, Budget Presentation, Other Departments Fiscal Year 2014 and 15.
Yeah, this is, just was that catch-all, placeholder, catch-all, if you needed, if you wanted to go beyond that. We did have, I will say that Mike Pasca Sella was here from the health, said he could only stay until about 8:15, I think he's probably gone, because he's, he's booked at the same night for Branford tonight, unfortunately, but, you know, he was here, should you have any questions like that, you know, an outside agency or any of the other departments.
Right. All right, Item E, Review, Communications Advisory Committee Status. This was brought up on the agenda from a fire commissioners' meeting. We have on the books an old committee that I think needs to be revived, and it would entail the fire department, a member from the police department, the people from the commission, fire commission, police commission, council, to get a better communication going. And I just wanted to get it on the agenda and, you know, see if it's something that we could revive. I think it would help with the communication among the fire, police, council, dispatch.
Sounds good to me.
So, I know tonight we have a full vote, but I'm going to carry this on and try to get, and there's a few other items for the fire commission, too, that we have to address right after the budget time, so. I know the chairman's here, did you want to comment on this committee at all, or are you good?
Joseph Intell, Chairman of the Fire Commission, Blue Drive, Northford. I'd just like to say that we have a lot of problems with dispatch, and we try to resolve them, and I think the communication committee would help a lot, because we can explain to them and show them exactly what's happening, so we can resolve it. So, that's all I'm looking for.
When's the golf tournament, Joe?
Last week in June.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You got a snow day?
Probably.
Item F, Financial Report.
Excuse me, just before we get to that, Item E will be coming back for the next meeting, is that what you want, discussion, or do you want research?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, yeah, right now...
In terms of maybe creation and formation of?
Right. We have to start picking some members. I guess we can contact Lisa and see who's currently on it, because they're probably still on there.
Yeah.
Well, no, it has the members on the bottom of page three, who are on it.
Yeah, right. And see if they're still on, we'll get a form.
Some of them are deceased, huh?
Right.
Yeah. They're probably...
No, I know, I was just saying, it's...
Yeah, it's been a long, long time. Right.
All right, kind of a mixed bag of news this month. I won't say remarkable, because it is remarkable. Top line, we focus on current tax collections, again, ahead of last year's pace. Again, the negative in the delinquent property taxes is a reflection of the Evergreen Wood settlement, that's why it kind of reflects as a negative, delinquent property taxes. Overall revenue, eighty-six point four compared to eighty-six point one, so we're ahead. The revenue side is, is looking good. Now for the not-so-good news. Our friend, Mr. Marola. Public Works, if you pull back last, last month's report, they were about 2.9 percent ahead of their year-to-year comparison. At February's timeframe, they're about 13 percent ahead last year to this year. However, that being said, if you shoot down to the bottom line of the budget, we're only about a percent and a half ahead of last year's pace. So, as I mentioned earlier, Mike has put a spending freeze, the town manager put a spending freeze in place, if between now and June 30th, things go in our favor, it might not be as bad as we anticipated on the memo that I created, which I'll get into next, but it runs the risk of us overspending the bottom line of the budget, which we haven't done in forever. So, it's a serious situation, and again, as Mike mentioned earlier, things like, you know, you've got to solve the roads, you've got to, you've got to open the roads, you can't say no, you've got to repair the trucks when they break, things you have to do. So, meeting the current obligations, and everybody's tightening their belt between now and June 30th, and hopefully we can bring it back in without going back to the well for additional appropriation. That is, that is a provision in the town charter that allows us to do that, should the time come, but I would rather wait until we get to the very end of the fiscal year to see what the hole is, if there's going to be a hole, rather than to try to guess now and to go there. Just to give you a ballpark number, if you take Fran's budget of a million seven eighty, and if you average it out over a 12-month period, it's about $148,000 a month. Last year, last month, I'm sorry, they spent $257,000, so over $100,000 above the average. Now, granted, obviously, winter months are skewed with the sand and salt and all the additional diesel fuel. This current month through last week's pay, payroll and the accounts payable, there already had $113,000 spent. The sheet that I created, that kind of, that went out to the council members and also to all the departments in town, showed basically where the overages were, and the big winner was the salt. We had budgeted about $164,000 in salt and spent about $310,000 in salt. So, there's $146,000 of additional appropriation that we have to find, net all the other lines in Fran's budget, about $160,000. There were a couple of other items, there was the revised animal control contract with Branford, that's going to be about $36,000 above budget. Property insurance, technology, the usual winners, legal expenses, the usual band of characters. At that time, we were looking at roughly about $231,000 potential shortfall. So, again, rather than to speculate, I'd rather wait to see how the rest of the year goes, if we can kind of wrangle it in a little bit, and like I said, everybody tightening their belt between now and June 30th, with any luck, we can salvage the year and not go over, over our bottom line. That, that's the goal.
So, I got a question for you.
Yes.
So, if we need to...
Yes.
We've got to go to the bank.
Correct.
Which is our...
Fund balance.
Fund balance. So, wouldn't it be better to take a guess at whether we're going to make it or not, and then we could take that much out of next year's budget, the amount we're already taking out of there, so that we could even up then, or?
I'd rather wait.
Leave the, because we have to make a decision on the budget before the end of June.
Right.
But, so you're saying, you think it'd be close enough, so it really wouldn't be that bad if we had to take 25 or...
Right, I'd rather wait until we got more finite numbers towards the end of the year than speculate at this point. You still have, you know, three, three months to go for the end of the year, so...
I mean, you see a possible way that we're going to make up that difference, or close the gap, is that...
Well, as, as I mentioned earlier, the town manager put a spending freeze on. Anything outside, even, even besides your utilities, has to go by him to get blessed first before you buy things. So, the departments are tightening their belts between now and June, will we tighten it to the tune of $230,000? I don't know.
Yeah.
But I'd rather not speculate and say, we need, we're going to be short 230, maybe short 100, maybe short 500, I don't know. Something may, may happen from now on, who knows, the boiler could blow, you know?
Right.
Things that happen from now on, June 30th, so I'd rather wait till the end of the year comes, you know, finite numbers, see where we end up, and then if we have to go back to the fund balance at that time, make one shot, just that we need to cover the hole and go from there.
Okay. How did the, just, because I missed how the East Shore or the Animal Hospital contract changed in midstream, how did that happen without any of us knowing about that, or did...
Yeah, it was, it was a contract the council approved. What happened was, if you turn back the clock about maybe seven to 10 years ago, we had our own animal control officer.
Right.
And the person was coming close to retirement and so on, so Branford had, they had a new facility, they had excess capacity, we wanted to get out of that business, our pound was being cited, it was inappropriate, a bunch of, a bunch of factors. So, a number was thrown out the books, $45,000. That's what our share was to go to Branford, and there was a clause in the contract, it said 3% per year will increase on that number, with no, no tie-in to any kind of volume basis. It was 45,000 plus 3% a year, that was what the deal was made back when Carl was here. About a year or so ago, towards the end of Bonney, the beginning of Mike's era, Branford, the renegotiation was, let's make it 30% of our costs. And when the number came in, going through the budget process, I sat with Mike, said, wow, it seems kind of like a huge increase. Let's get some data to see if we are, and sure enough, based on the information that our rep has gotten us, both on our volume and Branford's volume, we're about 31% of the volume. Based on, now, there's multiple factors, there's the number of dogs they impound, we went by the number of complaints, because complaints basically is man hours that they're, they're using to come to our town, and it was about, is an accurate number. So, we're paying 31% of last year's expenses, it's going to mirror basically the, the sewer situation where we have, we pay on last year's expenses and this year, always, you know, year lag, so we're paying 30% of last year's expenses for animal control facility in this year. It's accurate, so, we look at it for years, we got away with a pretty good deal, if you look at it that way. So, we had budgeted about 60, and I think in the current year, and it's going to be about 96,000.
So, going forward, would it make sense to go back to the way we used to do it, or it still wouldn't?
I think you'd have a hard time then, for them going back. I mean, it's, it's tied to, I'd rather have it a floating number, quite honest, I'd rather say, like we do with the sewer use, we say, okay, give us our flow compared to the total flow, that's a percentage, and we'll base it on last year's numbers. 30%, we're locked in, maybe next year, we're 10% of the business, so why should we pay 30% of the cost?
That's what they'll charge us then, whatever it is?
Whatever the 30%, well, the weight is now, it's 30%.
Well, that's, I don't know if Don was saying, go back...
Well, year to year, it'll, it'll be different.
Right.
Right.
You didn't mean go back to having our own dog pound or anything, right?
That's what I was asking.
Yeah, I thought that's what you were...
Our own, our own dog pound, I'm sorry.
But that, that would probably be prohibitive, because there's so many rules and regulations and...
Well, you'd have to, you'd have to build it now, air-conditioned and, yeah, climate-controlled and...
You've got to hire a person, you've got to get your vehicle.
We got two of them all this time.
We had the one full-timer, plus we had three or four part-time people, we had the vehicles, the dog pound.
You're not going to get that for $96,000.
It was huge. So, next year, he told me next year to put 105 in the budget, that's what Branford's estimating next year. So, my only thought would be, if we change, if we're able to change the contract, to make it a floating percentage based on, again, actual usage.
Well, that's what we want to do, no?
We should.
Right.
To lock it in at 30 is kind of erroneous, because, I mean, it's, it's an accurate number, looking at it for the past year's activity, or, but maybe two years from now, again, we go down, we go up, it's, it's hard to say.
Pay what, for what we use, that's all.
Exactly.
That's fair.
Yeah, so maybe we should, you know, look at renegotiating that...
Yeah.
Going forward, but...
So, I guess we already covered report on current fiscal year 2013-14 spending. Item G, Appropriation Transfers.
Second.
Yeah, no, I just... Moved by Counselor Esposito, seconded by Deputy Mayor Wentworth.
All of these coming in.
I'm going to have problems? No?
Everybody's good with the numbers.
This is the one, this is the one.
It's about three grand.
Roll call.
Mayor Candelaure?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Counselor Caprio?
Yes.
Counselor Diamond?
Yes.
Counselor Esposito?
Yes.
Counselor Fawnin?
Yes.
Counselor Fucy?
Yes.
Counselor Rose?
Yes.
Item H, Tax Refunds. Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Counselor Diamond.
How do we, Anthony, how do we have an $8,000 overpayment with Dunkin' Donuts, is that?
Yeah.
A settlement?
Yeah, that was a...
Okay.
Seems like we lost them all, huh?
Well, if we won, you would never know, because it's just about the same number, because we're lost.
Are we never losing saddles?
Yeah, I would defer to, to get...
The saddle.
Why are we losing them?
It's not a loss.
Because, five years ago, we did a fair job.
Right.
Well, that's, that is part of it, because a lot of times, these, these properties were assessed five years ago, when the property was valued much higher, and now they're being asked to pay something when the market is much lower, and the reverse is true. And please, we didn't lose anything, we, we agreed, we never had that money, we just decided that that's how much we were going to charge.
Immaculate decision. Actually, if I remember, this one was pretty skewed.
What's that?
This one was skewed unrealistically.
I, I, yes, it was, it was, so, you know, but look, we haven't lost any tax appeals yet. We haven't been in court at all. 99% of these things do get compromised out, and, you know, you're not going to be too far off if you think it's somewhere in the middle. But, you know, we just came off of a, of a five-year recession, and that has affected the opinion of, you know, of the judges who are pre-trialing these cases, so.
I guess I should appeal.
We haven't had a court case.
The only thing that, the only thing that I'll say to, you know, slightly differ from what you just said, is...
Thank you.
This, well, I don't want to correct you.
I don't want to be agreeable.
These appeals weren't this year, these appeals were on the assessment from five years ago. It just took them this long to get to court.
Well, that's not, well, not necessarily, but that's how it works. You don't want me, that's the procedure that we have.
Right. So, our fair and equitable thing we did five years ago, the guys appealed them in the first year, and all these things have just come out, and now we're getting our answers.
Could be. I don't know. Every case is different. Every case is different.
All right. We came to an agreement, so we got to, we might as well vote to it.
Every single one of them.
Roll call.
You always vote in on.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Pucey?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.
All right. This is item I.
Right. So, what I'm thinking on item I, because we really don't know what it is, I think we should send it, we should send a letter to the Board of Ed or let them know that, because again, some comments were made, but not by the whole Board of Ed, by one member. So, I would look favorably on this town taking over the buildings. That doesn't mean the other eight of you will, but there's probably no sense looking at it if the Board of Ed doesn't talk about what one member said, and if they agree with it or disagree with it, and get back to us. So, I would make a motion that we.
The members here.
Yeah, we want to get into it tonight?
Well.
And I don't know that the whole board has talked to him either.
Here's a problem.
What's the problem?
And I hate to be the bearer of this.
Oh, my God.
Information.
We're going to come to an agreement again.
There is a state statute that gives to the Board the power to operate, maintain, and care for all the buildings, all the lands, all the apparatus, and other property. And that's their responsibility. They have to do that. If you remember, they also have to provide, under the law, a safe environment, a safe environment. That doesn't mean, well, for instance, you talked about the tennis courts at a school. It may very well be that it ought to provide a safe environment that those tennis courts get fixed first.
John, not in, you said maintain property of theirs.
Maintain the buildings.
Oh, buildings.
Maintain buildings, land, property, that's what the statute says.
How come we break the statute and the Public Works takes care of the parking lots and?
Well, the decision-making is done by the Board of Ed. They're responsible for the proper care, maintenance. Whether you pay them in their budget or whether there's some other arrangement, that's another thing. But I understand the motion that Al was contemplating was something where the town would take over the decision-making process or the prioritizing process, and I think you will run a file of the statute. Now.
Okay.
You may remember about a year or two ago, we had an issue with the Board of Ed, and it had to do with whether, I believe it had to do with them constructing a, some sort of a car lift and, you know, changing a room into, into some sort of a car repair shop. And the issue was involving this, whether they had the authority to do that. And I believe my opinion was that they did not, because that was a capital expenditure that didn't have, in my mind, sufficient tie to the educational process. And so, that was my opinion, but I think that, and I can't believe I'm saying this, I think that if you're serious about doing that, I would be willing to certainly give you, you know, explore that statute with you in the form of a legal opinion, which is always advisory.
Right, but.
That's because.
I don't think if you're saying the state statute's black and white, then there's no sense doing it. I was looking at it as a board member suggested, you know, a rental tenant, a leasing tenant agreement, which you're saying we can't do, so I think.
Yeah. I would say that that would not be possible. I mean, the Board of Ed has other obligations under this statute. They're supposed to have a green cleaning program. That may not sit well with everybody here, but if that's what the statute, if that's what the state legislature says, and these all have to be reported to the Commissioner of Education, so they're under that obligation, and they can't delegate that and still be responsible for it. Now, within that spectrum, there may be a more efficient way to resolve some of the issues that you have, a more cost-effective way, and that may be through communications with the Board of Ed. And that's a different story. But the town can't, the town can't tell the Board of Ed how it is to prioritize its maintenance, its care.
Okay, one more thing now. So, if the Board of Ed delegated their responsibilities to the Town Council, did they cover themselves in the state statute?
Well, I think that's what I'm, I'm concerned about that, because what they're, if they're delegating their decision-making, that would be a violation of the state statute. If they say, look, all right, the Town Council will decide which school grounds get fixed first, which, well, like the tennis courts, I don't want to make it into a roof situation, that's a different story, or whether or not we clean the floors twice a year or six times a year, you know, you can just go on and on and on. The fundamental decision and the responsibility for that decision, it lies with the Board of Ed. I don't say that they're, you know, subject to, you know, working out something with the town, that there might not be some way where they can, this is what we want to do, we'll delegate to the town the getting of it done, okay? We want to create a certain educational environment for special ed students, and we want to have the rooms broadened, or we want to have walls taken down or something like that. Some of that may come under your jurisdiction as a capital improvement, anyway. Right. That's not our opinion.
We've got to keep it separate, because we're getting everything jumbled up here. We take care of the capital, we take care of everything else.
Right.
It's simple. So, let's just leave it there.
That's what the last opinion said.
Okay. Next. So, but here's the thing, what's the point of having a communication group if you're not going to, and somebody brings something up?
Well, we could talk about it, but they could do whatever they want, no?
And we don't even know.
They're a whole different entity. We give them a bottom line, that's it. And we take care of their capital.
See, a way to understand this, and I don't want to belabor it, but Boards of Ed historically were arms of the State Board of Ed, and so their main master is the State Board of Ed. That's why they're, it all flows that way. You know, a hundred years ago, a hundred fifty years ago, it was okay to have one State Board of Ed, they could handle everything. But as populations grew and education became more complicated, they realized we need to have satellite offices, we need to have satellite Boards of Ed, and that's how you got local Boards of Education. But the parent is the State Board of Ed, not the town. So, they derive from the Board of Ed of the state.
You good now?
Yeah, I like to hear from everybody, so maybe that board member should have a discussion with the board and see, you know, explain to them what he was talking about in communication, and then see if it's something that we can work out.
Item eleven, Citizen Statements and Petitions.
I'm Phil Dahmer, Oak Drive, Northford, also a member of the Board of Education. I was very disappointed and actually distressed that the Board of Ed's capital project requests were not included in the town manager's budget preparation, weren't included in his presentation at all. You know, and I think the previous discussion you just had makes it very clear that the Town Council is responsible for the capital projects budget, and I'd like to see it included in the town manager's budget from here on in, including this year.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bill Sword. I'm the Fire Chief for the town of North Branford. And following up on the Board of Ed's representatives' line of thinking, the Fire Department, based upon a recommendation of the Board of Fire Commissioners, submitted a budget that went to the Town Council, I'm sorry, the Town Manager, that will go to the Town Council. We have our budget presentation this Saturday. And I truly believe that we need to look back at the budget that was recommended by the Board of Fire Commissioners, especially when we look at our capital request. You may hear from some other people, you will hear from me on Saturday, about our needs and necessities, our obligations in respect to laws and regulations that we need to apply by. That is all based upon what our basic spending is, what our absolute must things are, not the nice things, not the amenities that we operate with. So, I strongly urge this Town Council to pay particular attention to what we're going to put on the table this Saturday and look back at what has been cut by the Town Manager with respects to public safety in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
I got a question for you, Bill. If you guys don't mind, I know this isn't a question to answer. It's a question about FEMA, what do they call it?
Assistance of Firefighters Grant Program?
No, the.
You were talking about first responder?
The, it's Incident Command System.
Yes, sir.
Is there a state law that says every school teacher, every town employee has to take that test and pass it?
You bring up a very good point.
I didn't know, and the reason I'm saying this, because I've heard this from a couple of other communities.
Uh-huh.
So, I actually went on and took the thing, it's like, has nothing to do with teachers and.
It does. It really does. It does.
I don't know. I'd rather have a teacher, I'd rather have them be looking at an incident in their own building than worrying about whether the fire chief or the police chief is in charge in a staging area or not. But that, okay, so is it a state law, or is it a suggested state law, or?
There's no state law that I'm aware of.
Okay.
But if you read between the lines, if something happens on a school property and involves hazardous material, and I'll give you a perfect example. You may have unused chemicals on site, you may have mercury that's in a glass someplace that has never been disposed of properly. Under twenty-nine CFR nineteen-ten-one-twenty, which is the Haz WAPR standard, you are obligated to follow the Incident Command System.
Okay. So, what are we doing in this town?
I'm not employed by the Board of Ed.
Well, I know with the mercury, we spread it around the back of the bus and made it go into. Come on, we all grew up doing that.
That's why I'm like this, or the way we are today.
But now it's really, now it's really, really bad.
All right. So, in a roundabout question.
So, it could be coming down the road.
It's a valid question, but it could be an issue, yes.
Okay.
I can tell you this, from my experience of doing tabletop exercises with universities and school systems, it's on the forefront of all their operations today.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any further? Thank you. All right. Motion to go into executive session.
Yeah, we, you hold that, just deferring to John, but talking, that was just a placeholder for a couple of items that are actually.
We're still in a meeting here, just sorry.
If you want to, basically, the non-meeting meeting for purposes of negotiations, rather than going into executive session, and that was just a placeholder. But I think that, according to John, the appropriate way to do it is to just adjourn and then have our non-meeting.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Yes.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Wentworth, seconded by Councilor Pucey. Roll call.
Mayor Candelora?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Wentworth?
Yes.
Councilor Caprio?
Yes.
Councilor Diamond?
Yes.
Councilor Esposito?
Yes.
Councilor Fawnin?
Yes.
Councilor Pucey?
Yes.
Councilor Rose?
Yes.